Broadwater.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen is absent. Mayor Protam Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Dalton.
Here. Okay, we'll have the invocation by Kingsley Okaraki and the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Jones.
Okay, join me for invocation. Dear Lord, we ask for your blessing over this meeting. In the midst of the busy and complex world we live, let your will be clear and let your will be done. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag and say the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Guys, here we have a presentation.
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Mr. Okaraki to make the presentation this evening.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this evening, the Gadding Grove City Council is pleased to shine the community's spotlight on Mrs. Mollane Blau, who has sent nearly 3,000 care packages to Marines serving in Iraq and Afghanistan. Will Mrs. Blau please come forward? In September 2005, Mrs. Blau's husband, Bob, read an article about the need for care packages for deployed servicemen and women. Mollane, then newly retired, was moved to act. Her husband is a retired Marine, and their son, grandson, excuse me, John, is currently serving in Okinawa, Japan. In their honor, her passion for this purpose has been in full speed ever since. Mollane, along with her family, bridge club friends, high school reunion committee, Long Beach State Tri-Delta sorority sisters, neighbors, and members of the public, send out 20 to 25 packages each week. The care package items she purchases and receives as donations are hidden around her house, under the bed, in the garage, anywhere space can be found, even in her car trunk. Items packed for shipping include shampoo, soap, lip balm, stationery, batteries, snacks, et cetera, and candy fills the empty spaces inside the boxes. The most appreciated items are clean socks and bold flavored snacks. During the holidays, each Marine receives a Christmas tree, decorations, candy, and cards. Postage for all care packages is paid for through donations, and oftentimes, as Mollane put it, "out of my social security when necessary." The Marines she sends care packages to were chosen off of www-anymarine.com website, listing Marines to be adopted throughout the deployment. Mollane currently supports 25 units, with 150 male and 50 female soldiers. Each care package touches the heart, hearts of these young men and women serving our great nation. One grateful Marine wrote a thank you note that said, quote, "I took the package of Skittles for myself, but gave the rest to my Marines," unquote. Mollane's passion has turned into a wonderful way for her to fill her time as a retiree. She does the packaging from home while watching her favorite TV shows, and even with all the items filling the house, Bob, her husband, is still very supportive. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Mollane with a certificate of appreciation and a gift in recognition of her support of those serving our country. We would also like to present you with letters and coloring sheets to include in your packages. These items were completed by visitors to the moving wall while it was here in Gadding Grove. The city council thanks you for your efforts and wishes you and your Marines all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Everybody wants to shake hands with you up here. We'd like you to say a few words. We'll do that, get a picture of you, and do the way.
Thank you very much.
No, go up, come back, so you're going back up a little bit. We're not letting you out of here yet.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you. So everybody can hear you, yes?
Well, everybody can hear me without it, I'm sure. We started this five years ago this month. We decided that we didn't need any more Christmas presents to ourselves. We would just rather spend the money on donating boxes to the Marines. We have found out over these five years that these men and women do not have socks, pillows, laundry detergent, food other than MREs, ready-to-eat meals. It is amazing that they survive over there with as little as they have. All of our boxes, every one of them includes a newspaper so that they can find out what's going on, six magazines, books, cards, snacks, and hygiene items. They don't have shampoo, soap, any of those types of things. One group served on a ship right outside of Afghanistan, and one of the girls wrote to me and said she would not ask for herself, but would we please send some of those little hotel-type things to these guys on the ship, because the ship smelled like feet and mold, and they didn't have anything worse to smell off with. So we did, and we sent 48 packages with a package for each man and a snack pack for each man. It has been, we have had Marines visit us at our home. Seven of them came when they came back from this tour of duty and came over to thank us for this. It has been such a fun and needed thing, and it's amazing how many people would love to do something, but they just don't know how to do it. And when they come over to my house and see everything in my house and what we do, they know that this stuff gets there, and they read the letters, and they know that it comes back. They're not just donating something and don't know where it goes. I thank you very much. This is such an honor for me, and I am thrilled to death to receive it, and I appreciate it very much, and it will certainly go on my wall where everything, all my Marine things are. I appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we also have another presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have representatives from the Rancho Santiago Community College District who'd like to give us an update if they'd like to come forward at this time.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Raúl Rodríguez. I'm the chancellor of the Rancho Santiago Community College District, joined tonight by the president of Santa Ana College, Dr. Linda Martinez, and one of our trustees, Dr. David Chapel. You know, it says on the agenda that we're going to do a state of the district address. I don't think we're really going to do that. What you need to know is revenues are down, expenses are up, like everybody else in the world. The state is forcing us to ratchet down the number of students we're serving while demand is at an all-time high. So we're just trying to stabilize like everyone else and survive this economic downturn and try to provide the best services we can to our communities. Given the presentation we just heard, though, I wanted to share something with you very quickly that I wasn't planning to share, but I was inspired by what we just heard. At Santa Ana College, for several years, we've had a Veterans Resource Center to serve our veterans who are coming back from Iraq and Afghanistan. They need special services to really make it in college a lot of times. You know, they're used to the discipline, the camaraderie in the armed services when they get out. They don't have that. All of a sudden, they're on their own. We do a great job of recruiting folks into the military. We don't do such a good job of transitioning them back to civilian life, and so a lot of them are falling through the cracks even here in Orange County. So we started this program at Santa Ana College to serve veterans, and now this semester we started one at Santiago Canyon College. And we don't get any state or federal money for these programs. We do it on our own dime, and we have to squeeze it out of other programs and signing staff who have other duties, extra duties to do this. So we've cobbled it together through our own resources. So to try to give those programs a little more working capital, if you will, we decided to do a fundraiser this year called Soldiers Scholars. We held it on September 15th, and we set a goal to raise $100,000 for the two programs, and we surpassed that goal, I'm happy to say, and we had a great event, and hopefully next year you would think about attending, because it's going to be an annual event. We hold it at the Sheriff's Training Academy that we have down at Tustin, and that lowers the overhead. We don't have to pay for a hotel and all that kind of thing, but we can then use that money directly for our veterans. They have a lot of needs for, you know, book waivers. A lot of times, they don't get their money on time from the VA, and they need others. Lots of other needs that they have, so this money helps us serve those needs. And so we're here, so that was a little off the point, but it gives you an idea of the kinds of services that we provide at our colleges. We are comprehensive community colleges, and we try to serve the whole range of needs in our community, and Gadding Grove is part of our community that we serve. And so we're here tonight to say we're still here, we're struggling like everybody else, but we're committed to serving Gadding Grove, and if there are opportunities in the future to expand those services, you know, we want to, we're interested. That's really the message. So I'm going to turn it over to the president of Santa Ana College. She's going to share with you just some quick information about the college and, yeah, we don't want to take a lot of time.
Hi, I'm Linda Martinez, and in your brochure, I've included a listing of all of the programs at Santa Ana College, and I call to your attention a couple of things. One is, we serve approximately 2,000 students. That lists Gadding Grove as an address here at our institution. We also serve as a resource for your police department as an agency, since we operate the Orange County Sheriff's Academy. And so you do have personnel that participate in that academy hired by your police department. We also are unique in that we have some programs that are not replicated in the region. Occupational therapy assistant, pharmacy technician assistant, you'll not find in, if not in Orange County, in Southern California. We have students that come that far. So I think it's a resource that while you think perhaps traditionally, you'll also find some unique programs that can benefit in this economic crisis, people that are looking for training and want employment. So I just glad to see some of you. I've met some of you. I enjoy your State of the City every year, and I'm very happy to be here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions? Any in the council, have any questions? Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll open our communications for the council and for the agency. Robin Mercario.
Good evening, city council, staff, and Gadding Grove residents. I'm Robin Mercario. I just want to make a couple of brief comments. A couple of weeks ago, I mentioned the Orange County Water District has a turf removal program, which is a worthy program, where if you apply to this waterboard turf removal program, before you remove your grass, you may be entitled to get up to a dollar per square foot. I utilize the program. I think it's a worthy program. I think that you may want to consider, as a council, putting it on your website so that it'll get an easy link to that. I also wanted to thank Public Works employee Gloria. She is an exceptionally professional and very proud employee. She and other Public Works members were working along the sidewalks at Lamson near my house, and I noticed, you know, after talking to my neighbor, one of the sidewalks had depressed, so it was a hazard. I brought it to her attention, and within a day or two after she spoke with her superiors, Steve and his crew came in and fixed it, and it was exceptional. I just, she's an amazing person. With regards to Public Works, I know, Mayor, you'll probably make this announcement later, but to do it twice won't hurt. Public Works is having their open house on Saturday, October the 22nd, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. It's on, it's a Public Works facility on New Hope, just before Westminster. There's lots of interactive displays highlighting all of the services that our Public Works employees do. You know, there's a water display, there's graffiti removal, trees, traffic, all kinds of demonstrations, prizes, food, band. It doesn't get any better. It's a wonderful family event. And I just wanted to commend the council, the staff, and all of the volunteers that participated in the Vietnam Memorial Moving Wall. I attended it twice during that, the interim, and I thought it was a thoughtful community event that honored our military service and remembered those who gave their lives for freedom. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Peter Katz.
Good evening, council and staff, and I hope you indulge me if I go over a little, Mr. Mayor. But I want to talk about this weekend's event on the moving wall being here in Gadding Grove. Out of the 100 hours that this wall was here, I spent upwards of 75 hours walking along the wall, talking to veterans and their families, escorting people to the names of lost loved ones, and I can write another book on the Vietnam War from some of the people I talked to. I want to share with you some of my thoughts and their thoughts here tonight on what we did in this great city. I believe this was the greatest event in the history of Gadding Grove. It brought this community together like nothing else. We have a lot to be proud of in honoring our fallen heroes and those that are still serving in harm's way in far and distant places. From the opening day, when veterans like Charles Mitchell and myself unloaded that trailer and started putting up the panels, and even before that, the volunteers from the Carpenters Union had laid the foundation, the Public Works Department that mopped the grass so we didn't have a muddy field, all the student volunteers and the volunteers working on their own time coming together to make this event so successful. But I will not forget what I learned this weekend. The Saturday night dinner under the stars with Joe Galloway, who wrote the best book ever written on Vietnam, "We Were Soldiers Once and Young," told the stories of how the reporters did not report the war adequately to the home front. But the food for lunch thought on Monday with 250 seniors and juniors from the Gadding Grove School District, where students walked along the wall and learned sometimes, perhaps for the first time, what some of their parents and grandparents had gone through in that horrible time fighting in a war far, far away. Many thanks go out to the city employees and the staff, people like Eileen, Marty, Jennifer, you all know who you are, that helped put this together. It would not be possible without a team working together to do this, and this great council coming together and supporting such a great event that we hope to one day springboard this into building a museum here in Gadding Grove dedicated to this war and its aftermath and what we're still dealing with on the home front today. I want to share with you now some of the stories that I experienced along this wall. The shining light of the sun on this event was fueled by the shining spirit of freedom and democracy, honor, and duty. One young man told me, "I knew I would cry. I just knew it." But as he wept, I put my arm around his shoulders, and I told him it was good to cry. It's not a shame to cry. One young Vietnamese woman, she was born after the war. She was there in a skirt and heels with her two young daughters and knelt down to lay a flower at the wall. She taught her children to take a rubbing off the wall that this soldier gave his life so that she could raise them in freedom. It goes on and on. A brother, whose brother had been killed in Vietnam when he was seven years old, received a letter from the Marine Corps signifying that. Five years later, he got a call saying that his brother was still alive in a prisoner of war camp in Cambodia. His mother fought to have his confirmed death changed on the wall to missing in action. And they're still struggling. Their story was told on Unsolved Mysteries, and they're still fighting with the Pentagon about the truth about his brother. He was there crying, standing in the rain. When they were, when we, the day before we put the wall up, he knew it was coming, and he didn't know if he could come and look at it. These are the stories. There was a lipstick-stained love letter from a woman who drove from Pasadena to honor her high school sweetheart. She has never forgotten him. There are classmates, friends, brothers, sisters, uncles, fathers, cousins, sons, daughters, grandchildren, they all came. There was a Dear Daddy letter from a young child, flowers and teddy bears, beer bottles and cigarettes, photographs, and wall etchings of the names lay at the base of the wall. If you, you just listen to these stories, one, one after another, and I can share a few of the ones that I have of my own. I served on the military burial detail when I was in the service, and I've had women who lost sons. One mother jumped into a grave after her son and broke her leg. Another mother who draped a flag over my head and said that I had killed her son. So I know some of these moving stories, and I wanted to spend as much time along this wall comforting some of these people. I escorted bodies on lonely flights from Oakland to Savannah, and Atlanta, and Charleston, and Miami. The riderless horse indicated a fallen soldier. It hammered the point across. The tafs that were played for the 41 fallen soldiers from here in Gadding Grove and the families that laid wreaths at the wall. This was very moving and very touching. There are 58,267 names etched along that wall, and I can just share with you just some of these stories, but there are many, many more in my notebook, and I think this is a noble effort on our part to build this museum here in Gadding Grove, and I hope this city rallies around us so that we can tell this story, so that one day, this will be a destination point to teach our young children the horrors of war, but that freedom is not free, and we must defend our borders. And so, in closing, I would just like to read a poem that is timeless and moving in this day and age still. It's a poem from World War I, and it was reflective of what we saw here this weekend. "In Flanders Field, the poppies blow Between the crosses, row on row, That mark our places in the sky, The larks still bravely singing fly, Scarcely heard amid the guns below, For we are the dead. Short days ago we lived, felt dawn, saw sunset glow Loved and were loved, and now we lie in Flanders Field. Take up our quarrel with our foe To you, from failing hands, we throw the torch. Be yours to hold it high If you break face with us who die, we shall not sleep, Though poppies grow in Flanders Field." And I pulled this up from the library here in Gadding Grove this evening, and the Canadian librarian recited this word for word. She learned this poem in school. A Canadian wrote this poem. So with that, I leave you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy Bergen.
Anyways, well, I was going to open, of course. I had went over to see the Vietnam Wall myself, and that's the third time I've seen either the real wall or the moving wall, and every time you do learn something new, you get a totally different perspective, but the one thing that really strikes you is they're not only names, they were people. And it goes to show that, you know, you read it in the newspaper, you see it on the news, you see it in the old Life magazine, but when you come down to it, they were, they were people, and there was somebody that, like Peter was saying, that they're still standing 45 years later at the wall crying because that person isn't there. So it is quite a moving thing to see, and I do thank the city for that opportunity for us. And I was going to go over to the opening ceremonies, but I thought they were Friday, so I was a day late and a dollar short. But anyways, I did get there, and I did see Mr. Broadwater was there, and so, at that time. So it does go to show that little things like that sometimes do mean a lot, and they are very good for students, very, very good. Well, my first kind of miscellaneous topic was one of my friends just in the city, she came up to me the other day, and she was just kind of curious as to why she had gone to somewhere to get, in the city. She just basically told me the general gist of it. She didn't go into great detail, for a resale license for something like one of these mail things, you know, online mailing out off things. So she was looking for a resale license, and the only thing she was going to do, she was going to have no one come to her house, she was going to store some miscellaneous materials that she would be resaling and selling out and shipping out of her house, and she was denied. So I didn't get all of the great detail. She was just kind of brought it up as a curious thing, because most of my people I know, know I come up here and speak all the time. But her question to me was, then why, if I can't, out of my house, where I take boxes in my car to go to the post office and mail it out, I do not get anything shipped to me? I either go out and I buy it myself or whatever. Why are there three or four big trucks, large trucks with company logos parked on my street every night and every weekend, and they don't move? They belong to someone that lives in that neighborhood. She said, "I'm not obstructing the neighborhood at all with what I'm doing," and I was denied, and these trucks are there. She said, "If they're business trucks, shouldn't they be parked on business properties, which this being a single-family residence neighborhood, it is not?" So that was my, her question to me is, why? And I said, "Well, probably the main thing is, we only have code enforcement people during daytime hours." The same reason why if a light bulb goes out on the street, we have to notify somebody, because code enforcement isn't driving around looking for bulbs that are out at nighttime. But that is something to think about, is that there's a lot of people, and most neighbors, even though we have been hearing from a lot of different areas, people get mail saying, "Your neighbors have been complaining," most neighbors will not, will not rat out their neighbors. They will not call up and say, "Hey, listen, there's a truck on my street every, every weekend. So it's really a catch-22 for you guys." How do you, how do you catch these people that are basically using their property as, I'm assuming these are all business-type, building-type trucks or that, if there's nobody out there to look at them or report them? Because let's face it, even the trash people, they, they're finished their job at 5:00 at night, so there's no one picking up trash, so it's very hard for you guys, too. But she was just kind of a little bit upset, because she said this was going to subsidize her income a little bit, but she wouldn't, they wouldn't, they wouldn't grant her a resale license or for whatever. Then another thing I noticed with our little bit of rain we had last week that was quite refreshing, was that we still have a couple of intersections around our city that are quite flooded whenever it rains, and we only really did get a couple of hours' worth of rain. All of our gutters and drains were pretty well cleaned out, so the water should flow. As you're heading up Harbor Boulevard, heading towards Target, you can't drive in the lane closest to the curb once you hit Lamson, because it's flooded. And that was only after an hour or so rain. And then I was turning, the next morning, I was going over down Gadding Grove Boulevard to the Fairview intersection, and that was a massive flood. Everybody had to practically stop their car and creep across, because if you went driving, the water just came, whoosh, all over. Now, my question on that is, the previous week, previous meeting here, the city agreed to pay $200,000, $2,450,000 for a piece of property. This is out of city funds, not out of redevelopment funding. Now, if we have that much extra money, that we can just write a check for $619,000 as a down payment, why don't we use some of that to fix that intersection? And I do know that intersection at Fairview and Gadding Grove Boulevard have been, has been fixed at least a couple of times, but whatever the issue is, it doesn't fix when the rain comes down. So that's basically all of the things I had to say today, but I do thank you for the wall, and thank you for just looking into those two issues the next time it rains. wall, and thank you for just looking into those two issues the next time it rains. Check that intersection. Bye-bye.
Okay, we'll do. Thanks, Peggy. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. It was my honor and privilege to help in setting up the wall, along with Peter Katz and a whole group of volunteers from all over the community. It was a tough job getting everything moved over there and getting it all installed, but the outcome was just amazing. And I was back the following morning to help people find names on the wall. And it was very difficult sometimes to control my own emotions when I was walking with these people and seeing their reaction when they found the name of a loved one on the wall. I think it is wonderful that we were able to bring this wall to Garden Grove. Those that attended the opening and closing ceremonies really found a chance to see what Garden Grove is all about. We had people from all over the area coming to our community for this event. If you had an opportunity to visit the display and the building, this is just a sample of what we hope will someday be a museum honoring our participation and our 41 lost troops and the others who served, some who died, some who returned, but all who served in Vietnam. I think the museum will be an outstanding asset to Garden Grove, and I think it's marvelous that Councilman Broadwater and Peter Katz, who serve on the board of the foundation, are doing all this work to someday bring that museum to being in Garden Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close oral communications at this time, and recess the council and go to the agency.
At this time, we'll open up the agency for community development. Could you please call roll Ms. Pomeroy?
Member Beard.
Here.
Member Dalton.
Here.
Member Jones.
Here.
Vice Chair Nguyen.
Here.
Chair Broadwater.
Here. Okay, we had a closed session item that got canceled, so we didn't do that. Oral communications have been done. There are no oral communications, there are no consent items, there are no public hearings, there are no items for consideration. So now we come to matters from agency members and director. And I am the director, so I have a matter here. There was an article in the paper, Orange Garden Grove Journal, Alternatives for Redevelopment. Well, there are some. This guy wrote this article, and I'm telling you, he had no clue what redevelopment was. He's a, the sad part about it, he's a political science lecturer at Long Beach State. And it's amazing that he, and this article goes through it and talks about why we should spread it around to little businesses and not just jump on the big businesses and everything else. And I, he said it would be hard, but it could be done. It could be hard, and it could be done, and it would not be very profitable if we did it. I mean, certainly, we've looked at every aspect of redevelopment we possibly can, and that hasn't happened. I did, I got a total from Kingsley tonight of the monies since I have been on the city council that have gone from the redevelopment agency into the general fund for bed tax only, not sales tax, but just bed tax only. And it's $103.5 million. That all has gone right from Harbor Boulevard to the most park, right into the state fund, state fund, to the general fund. I think it's amazing that anybody could not study something and write an article about it and be so shallow in it. And, you know, and it dawned on me, there had been an article written the week before that was done very well in the Orange, in the journal. And I read that article, and I was really proud, proud of the guy that wrote it. So I framed it for him. And I'd like to give Mayor Dalton this plaque that has it, so he can memorialize the one letter that I've seen him write, and it's good. And not only that, but it has an excellent picture of him. And you know how hard it is to get an excellent picture of the mayor? Anyway, he looks good. It was a good article. Thanks, Bill. You really did a good job. And with that, we will close the community redevelopment agency.
Is there going to be a future meeting?
You know, we really don't know that.
True. Week by week.
That could have been a rhetorical question. Okay, well, we're going to keep the council in recess at this time because we're going to celebrate Councilman Jones's birthday, and we have some cake, so. He's only 39 years old. A lot of you out there have no idea who Jack.
... permitted electrical and plumbing work. In August 2007, the unpermitted fourth residential dwelling unit was converted back to a communal recreation room with a bathroom and laundry room. The property owner has since then claimed that the fourth residential unit was permitted by presenting a document labeled as, quote, "City Building Permit" to city staff, which labels the use of building as a, quote, "four-unit residential dwelling." Dates written on the permit show 1978 as inspection dates. This property was not annexed into the City of Garden Grove until 1980. Prior to 1980, the subject property was an unincorporated area of Orange County and therefore under Orange County's jurisdiction. The city only inspects and issues building permits for properties within its jurisdiction. The city would not have inspected or issued a permit for this property in 1978. An Orange County's successor building record of the property dated 1978 correctly identifies the property as a three-unit dwelling with a recreation room, a bathroom, and a laundry room. Staff determined that the use of building section of the submitted permit was incorrectly labeled as a four-unit residential dwelling when the property was really a three-unit residential dwelling with a communal recreation room, bathroom, and laundry room. While the origin of the permit is not known, it is not a city-issued document, and it provides no basis to support the four units on the site. Therefore, it is recommended that the city council adopt the attached resolution upholding the planning commission's decision denying site plan number SP 460-11 and variance number V-189-11 in full and thereby deny the appeal. And that will conclude staff support, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this matter?
Yes.
One more?
Oh, one more? Yeah.
We only need four.
We only need four. We have one to recruit.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and staff of Garden Grove, yes. My name Leon Tran, M&amp;G Design for Canvall, who, the owner for the building is A742 Stanford Avenue, Garden Grove, California. We appeal from the planning commission for site plan number SP 460-11 and variance number For the question, we have a site, site plan, design, and circulation. The existing building was built before City Garden Grove accepted, so City do not have any existing building permit or record of the building. But we have in my hand the existing permit transfer from the listing and realtor agent when we buy the property. Can you see in the back? We have the building permit for the City Garden Grove. Our building location is corner of Stanford Avenue and Josephine Street, within three units. Each unit have a two-bedroom, two-bath, and City say one recreation room is now vacant, nothing to use for in this room. The building setback is firm setback 20 feet, 10 feet for size, 26 inches in rear setback. Now we confirm for City law court. Parking, we have a three-unit, each unit we have a parking, and then the new studio says one parking, so require parking, seven parking. Now we have enough parking for the space, because I have to new layout to parking more in the side. Can see the back. The last side, our last side is 7,470 square feet, within three full units, two-bedroom, two-bath, and we provide for new studio at 380, convert from the recreation room. We checked all the building around, and we see they have three more, the address, we have the four units, but the same size, same lot. We indicate in the paper all the address there. So we think it's, our lot is very good, because our size, the neighbor around is same size, same lot, and they have four units. Until now, we have three, and the small studio is not four units, is studio only, just small bedroom and the small kitchen and restroom. Even though we have the profit lot for the, I have to provide all the profit lot, and everything we have lost in the months, every year, we lost $10,000 per year, because something problem about the unit four cannot renting, now vacant. Facting is unapproved, variant for number 189-11 do not create any material agreement for the plac welfare nor any physical injury matter of sale housing or convenient neighbor vicinity. Approved for variants V-189-11 could make up balance the financing. Thank you very much.
Anyone have any questions for the proponent here? Okay, you may sit down then.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, if you have a question.
How do you explain that the building permit was issued before that property was part of the city, when it was still County Island and it wasn't incorporated into the city?
Dear Mayor and all the staff and everybody in here, good evening. When we bought, when we bought the four plaques, they showed us that they had the permit. That's all I know. And beside that, we see, we see four mailbox there, four family there, living right there, and.
So you don't know where the permit came from? Is that what you're saying?
From the realtor.
The realtor got that for you. Okay.
Did you, did you take this up with the sellers or the realtor? I mean, in light of, you know, what you found out now from the city? I mean, have you?
We didn't know until like two years later, when the tenant moved out and we cleaned up to have a new tenant come in. But lucky for me that somebody called, I don't know, but you know, the city come and they say that you cannot let people live in this studio, and that's all. And right now, we have the profit loss. The tide like this is the economy. I have to load down all the rent for the tenant, and it's hard for me to survive.
Okay, I'm going to ask staff a question. Was there, did someone take this to court, and the judge ruled that this was a triplex and not a fourplex, or what's going on with that?
That is our understanding what had transpired, that they had gone to court over this matter, and that the judge had indicated that the valuation was deemed to be three units, not four units. And Councilman Jones, you are correct, that the permit that somehow materialized itself, and we don't know how, does indicate that the signature dates for inspections were in the 1978 period, which we didn't annex this area total into the early 80s. So, and we double-checked as far as we could to verify that there is no way that a permit could have been issued from the City of Garden Grove at that time. So how this came about, or how it was, whatever, we have no idea.
Do you even recognize any of the names or signatures on the document?
I don't know.
Excuse me? Even that, I had the original signature from the people at the city. Do you want to see that?
I mean, the same document?
Yes, but you know, the original one.
Well, that's what I'm asking. There's like a bemovious or mo, I can't read what it says, but, or I'm not sure if that's the right signature. There's other parts that are initialed.
I don't know if you just might stop that original one that you were talking about, so you don't go home thinking you could have had something if you showed it to us. Can you just raise it?
They have a phone number in there, too, 5300151. Is that City's phone?
Not currently. All the city number, I want 714741.
Yeah, 7145300151. Is this one, this there?
That's not City Hall, but, I mean, it's a Garden Grove phone number by the prefix, but it's.
If we're checking on, it's 1980 or 79, because the permit signed up on December 1979, or not 80.
I have a question. If that permit was valid, would we, would we actually, I mean, would we back up and okay, four variances on a property? I don't think I've ever voted in 18 years, four variances on one particular property. That's huge.
I'm not recalling that many variances either. I would say that the first part, your question, Council Broadwater, is that if this was a valid permit, we would not be here tonight. We would accept this as a four-unit.
Yeah, it'd be a little non-conforming because it would have a valid permit, but.
Again, our records show that we annexed this area, I believe, in 1983 or so, and these records show 1978, 1978 period, so.
Five years before we were there, then?
Correct.
You know, I'm not sure, 100% sure, but I'm reasonably sure that in the 70s and 80s, this number is 530, at the police department, and City Hall, I believe, were 638 numbers. In fact, if you go, you'll find some of the old tollway signs, and it was also, the starting numbers were 638, 6615, 6640, whatever. And I worked there then, so I know those were valid.
If we had this variance, would we have it having? For this kind of permit?
They did, plenty.
Back then, back in the eight. Yeah. If we had this kind of permit?
If it was under city jurisdiction and they did not meet the code at the time, we would have processed the variance back then.
And we don't have a record of that. Is that correct?
No, because this site was developed under the county of Orange.
I'm satisfied with that. We don't have a record of that. I have a question for staff. The area that's shaded and green, is that a permitted area, like for recreational? Or it's not permitted even for that?
As far as we can tell, it was part of the original structure, which was indicated for a half-bath, a laundry facility, and maybe a recreation, a small recreation space.
Okay, so I suppose the structure, the setback, and everything's okay if it's used for that purpose?
That's correct.
Okay. And, go ahead, go ahead.
And I do believe that there's a water meter set up for that unit for the purpose of using it as a laundry facility.
Okay. And can we, do you have an idea offhand, what's the minimum that we have allowed in a variance for, for a studio?
Yeah, do we have any 380-foot studios?
To be honest with you, I'm not recalling that we've deviated from that, as far as I can remember. Rarely do we ever see anybody proposing studios. Our minimum studio size is 500 so square feet. Our minimum studio size is 500 so square feet, but typically people build one bedroom, two bedroom, or three bedroom units.
The only exceptions I ever remember hearing to that is like SRO type conversions of the old motels. If it's like a specific, you know, senior housing or affordable subsidized use or something, and I've heard of some exceptions, but it would allow something that small. But otherwise, that's, you know, 380 foot is pretty small for.
That's correct.
For dwelling unit. Did you guys in fact take the previous owners to court on this or the listing agent or the something? I mean, did you guys actually pursue a, a court case with this?
Yes.
And, and what happened?
They, they gave us the money, but you know, all the money, the lawyer get most of it, 90%. And can I have a more detail? And he's pay on the visit license? When he renting, for renting for business license, he get a four unit business license in City Hall, so he pay every year four unit, it's not three unit. So what happened?
The previous guy, you mean?
From the previous and include me, you know, until even after they shut down and the city still send me more four unit, I pay four units all the time.
If I'm trying to blow, I would not be willing to bend on this for that reason alone. I mean, we make all kinds of mistakes and just because you make a mistake doesn't mean that it's a presidential situation that you have to, you have to go for it because you made a mistake. I, I'm gonna find it, I would find it very hard to vote for, for four variances on one property. I mean, that's just tearing up the zoning laws.
But you know, the, the neighbor have four units and they only like 50 square feet more than the land we have. Three, three other buildings have only like 50 more square feet and they have the four units.
Well, the permit that you, you provided a permit that you say is an original that each of the council members looked at and it's, it's not really an original, it's a copy. So you may, well, it's, it's not an original, what you showed us. And even then, you know, there's quite a bit this question, you know, I'm sure that you're not involved in anything. However, there is some, some concerns about the validity of that and the city didn't even own that property at that time. It wasn't within the city then, it was in county territory. So. Any other questions or comments?
I see the point you're trying to make. The surrounding areas have other properties that has about the same size and lot, but the main concern here from staff in the council is that that fourth unit is so small. You know, the possibly other lots have units that has the requirement more than 500 square feet. So anything smaller than that 500 square feet, if it's like within maybe 50 feet, I could see a reasonable variance, but this is 100 and something square feet. So I'm, I don't think the council would be comfortable with that.
Yeah, to me too, it's not, it's not necessarily the number of variances because I could imagine cases where there could be four variances, but because of certain site constraints or something, it would be warranted. But it's, it's the nature of the variances in this case. Even if you threw out minimum lot size, the other one is, like you said, it's the dwelling unit size, which is substandard at 380 feet. It's also under park, has six parking spaces needs or something, maybe I'm reading that wrong, but it's three to five parking spaces deficient.
They proposed to fix that, but even with that, I think the unit is too small.
I had to make a motion, is public hearing over? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, why don't I make a motion?
I make a motion that we support the position of the planning commission.
You've gotta close the public hearing and do all that stuff.
Yeah, that's all, we've closed the public hearing, so go. Go ahead, Mr. Broward.
My motion is to approve the planning commission.
I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion and a second call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Okay, next 5B.
Councilmember Beard.
Mr. Mayor, your second public hearing is an amendment to the Garden Grove Municipal Code, which is a general update of Title VIII, and John Clark is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mayor and members of the city council, this is the next installment in our ongoing series updating the municipal code. Today is Title VIII, which is peace, safety and morals. So these are the various and sundry violations of good behavior that the police department enforces. And there really aren't any major substantive changes in this title, but we are available to answer any questions that you may have. And I would like to read the ordinance title. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove amending Title VIII of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to remove obsolete references, to conform references to current city organization and practices, to make consistent with recent changes in state and federal laws, and to make other non-substantive changes. And with that, we're available to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions for staff? If none, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion. More motion?
Second.
Have a motion, a second call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Items for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, 7A is an award of contract to Arnez Engineering for the construction of well 31, and Dave Ensminger is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Staff recommends that Arnez Engineering Contractors be awarded a contract for the construction of well 31 equipping project. The project consists of furnishing and installing a pump and electrical equipment, building enclosure and other improvements required to operate well 31. Other improvements will be made within the pump house and will convert two large electric pumps from constant speed to variable frequency drives. Twelve bids were received by the city clerk office on September 15th, 2011. The low bidder was Arnez Engineering Contractors with a total bid of $1,671,470. Licenses, references and all of the paperwork have been reviewed and verified by staff. Efficient water funds are available for the construction of this project. Is therefore recommended that the city council award and authorize city manager to execute the agreement with Arnez Engineering Contractors in the amount of $1,671,470 and reject all other bids. This concludes staff report and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, please.
Second.
Have a motion, a second call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
7B.
Mr. Mayor, 7B is an award of contract to West Coast Arborist for as needed tree maintenance service, and Bill Murray is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, tonight council is being asked to award a contract for on-call tree maintenance service for not to exceed price of $330,000. Staff prepared a request proposal and on August 15th, 2011, received four qualified responses. Staff reviewed and rated the proposal and determined, from those four, and determined that West Coast Arborist would provide the most cost-effective service to the city. West Coast Arborist was the highest rated firm and provided the second best cost for the service. The proposal is within the maintenance budget for this item and should the council decide to award the contract this evening, tree trimming services can begin before the end of November. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. More motion?
Second.
Have a motion, a second call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Ordinance is presented for second reading.
Mr. Mayor, your first ordinance is ordinance number 2800. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove amending Titles I and 18 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to remove obsolete references, to conform references to current city organization and practices, to make consistent with recent changes in state and federal laws, and to make other non-substantive changes.
Any questions or motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
A motion, a second call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
8B.
8B is ordinance number 2801. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove amending Chapter 50 of Title VIII of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to authorize remote caller bingo games.
Any questions or motion?
Move it.
Second, okay, motion, a second call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, matters, Mr. Broward.
Well, I want to say happy birthday to Mr. Jones and of course, I'd like to say happy birthday to Chris Beard's wife Cheryl. And I would like to mention something I saw in the register the other day. I saw in the register where the Golden State Water Company was raising their rates for the city of Placentia. So I had staff take a look at their rates and compared them. Now this is an outside vendor, this is like having, well, it's like having a contractor do your water for you. And western states, I do believe, is gets a lot closer than Placentia to us. I think that they're the provider for Stanton. For a small amount of money, you can have a certain amount of water in the city of Garden Grove for $76.69. But if you're buying it from Golden State Water Company, you paying $101.10 for that same amount of water that you would buy in $76.69 in Garden Grove. However, that's not the end of it. That's what they're charging them right now. With no increase, it would be $132.55. Now, about 15 years ago, we decided that we'd take a look at, at putting our own water department up for sale and we had four bids on it. And not one come close to operating the water company as efficiently as the city was already operating it. Not one, they didn't get a minute. I, I feel sorry for the people of Stanton, they don't have their own water because they should. I think that the city of Anaheim with their electrical services, deliver it cheaper than Southern California Edison delivers it. I wish we had our own electrical services too, but we don't. But I can just say that you see a lot of cities now, they're, they're putting everything out to bid because they think that just because it's the private sector, they're gonna do better than they will in the public sector. It's not true at all. It's not true in Garden Grove, it's not true in Stanton, it's certainly not true in Placentia.
That's all I have. Thank you. Ms. Lynn.
Yes, I want to remind everyone that times are tough and there are a lot of people going through foreclosures, especially also the renters who are in properties that are going through foreclosures. You have certain rental rights to stay in the property within a certain amount of time if you can produce your lease with the landlord. And the landlords who are losing the property are property owners who are losing property through foreclosures. And if you're going to get aid into keeping your home, you have to be careful of the promises that are made to you to keep your home. A lot of people are being asked to give a lot of cash upfront so that they can reduce the rate, the rate of the loan and to reduce the amount of the loan and to keep their home. And sometimes the promise is to keep the home without any loan on the property that they had before. So those are very unrealistic promises and if you were being promised those things, get a second opinion because a lot of people has fallen victim to those kind of scams. There are government programs out there, but they're limited and they're, and, and your rights are limited. So get a second opinion and the best thing to do is to contact a legal aid society program because they are nonprofit and sometime supported by the government. Also, I wanted to mention regarding my participation in the moving war memorial last weekend, it was very touching to hear some of the stories by the family members of this, of the soldiers who served in Vietnam. And to see, hear from a different perspective, I usually hear it from another perspective where I'm part of that war and I don't hear the other side of it sometimes, the anti-war people and the family members of the people who died, who served for the country. So in the end, we all agree on one thing, that those who died didn't die for no cause, they die for a good cause, that is to defend the freedom throughout the world and especially they died serving the United States of America, which we all live in and are a part of, and I'm proud to be a part of that. I want to thank the council member for supporting that, staff for doing such a wonderful job with that project. And the mayor made a very moving speech as well as council member Broward. They are a big part in this project and we have them to thank for it because it's gonna be here and it's going to give a lot of education to our children and the people who don't know very much about the war. Happy birthday to council member Jones and council member Chris Beard's wife Cheryl.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thanks, yeah. Just kudos to staff and council for all the effort they went into this weekend with the moving wall being in town. I had no idea what to expect heading into it and I was truly blown away at just how top-notch of a production it really was to have the wall there and all the exhibits and all the, the folks and the real world stories that went with it and it was, it was really touching, so it was a great experience. Happy birthday to Cheryl and then, of course, it's my own birthday week too and, you know, after a certain age, birthdays kind of lose their luster anyways and start to kind of remind you that you're not a spring chicken anymore. But to top that off, I'm at, I'm taking my son to football practice last night at Pacifica High School and he runs off head of me. Young girl walks by, kind of smiles, I'm thinking, okay, cool, I still got it. And then next thing I hear, hey, Emily's grandpa. Like, no, she's not talking to me. Emily's grandpa. And she taps me on the shoulder, she's like, aren't you Emily's grandpa? Thinking, no, I'm not Emily's grandpa. So that's how I got to celebrate my birthday week this week.
Thank you. Mr. Beard.
Happy birthday to you, Steve, old man. There you are. I too participated and had an honor and a privilege to be a participant in the moving wall as a spectator, as a public official, and what a worthwhile event it was. It was just truly moving, educational, historical, everything you wanted, wanted to be. As a nation, we've, we've honored our citizens, our veterans, our fallen heroes. As a city, we honored the 41 that fell and gave their lives for this great city and for this great nation. So it was very, very worthwhile, start to finish, it was well done. You have to, kudos, appreciation to all the volunteers who participated and all the city staff who worked very hard to make it happen. But probably one of the most rewarding experiences was talking to the vets themselves who've lived through it, the immigrants who came over, seeing the whole education center, it was just phenomenal and, and it was so worthwhile and I think we did a great job as a city. I was, I was proud to be a part of that. And with that, we have another festival coming up, the Korean Festival, so look for information and advertisements about that coming up. And I want to again wish happy birthday to Steve Jones and most important to my loving and wonderful wife Cheryl Beard, I want to wish her a happy birthday and I'll share your wishes to giving her, having a happy birthday for her. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy birthday to your wife Cheryl and Steve, happy birthday to you. And being a grandpa is really not that bad. I, I just would like to make, everybody has made some comments and rightfully so and very deserving, but you know, the program put together with the moving wall and with the education center, it takes hundreds of people to put something like that together and to successfully carry it out. And with more than 100 volunteers, not only from Garden Grove, but from other cities, I want to thank them for assisting us through those five days. And I'd also like to thank all of the staff that worked on this, especially the community services department for carrying out such a powerful and memorial event. You know, You know, we're always talking about cities, how Garden Grove is a city of volunteers, and we, we still are. But the staff, unmatched our staff with any other city. They have more, but we have better. And I'll tell you, there were people that were camping out there, people that were on our salaries that were doing it on their own time, staying overnight to help secure it, and in case people wanted to, some form of explanation or something, they were there to provide that. I mean, it was just unbelievable. I could tell stories too, as Peter did, and, and a lot of them did bring tears to your eyes in, in talking to some of the veterans and the families that had lost someone. But it's, it was just a moving experience, and for those that didn't get there, I'm sorry, you really did miss something, because just talking to the people, I know when I was talking, giving a speech, I just had this funny feeling coming over me, and it, I, I really, I really can't explain it. But those families, those people, those soldiers, and in fact, of the 58,267, eight of them were women, there were nurses that got killed in Vietnam. There were nursing our troops, you know, during the battles and all. I just hope the kids that were able to go from the high schools, and I want to thank Laura, because a lot of the high schools, especially Bolsa, they were sending them class by class, they could go over to actually see and touch the wall and hear some of the stories and see some of the displays that were there. It was just really moving, and for those that didn't see it, you really did miss something, and I hope you get an opportunity somewhere else to either see that wall or the one in Washington DC. I'm going to adjourn the meeting until our next meeting, Tuesday, October 25th, at 5:30 PM in the council chambers. Thank you.